Okay, so we would like to call this meeting to order.
Seven eleven PM.
Seven eleven PM, and if you can, would you please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with me?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, roll call, please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderwoman Evans excused as absent, Alderman Spivey excused as absent, Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Present. Okay, Pastor, if you will lead us in a word of prayer.
Thank you for our leader, Mayor Ford, and every trustee, thank you for every citizen of this community. We ask your continued blessings on our city, for we know we cannot do anything without you. Bless our community's endeavors, provide every resource needed to serve our constituency. We pray for solidarity, we pray for our police and fire department, we pray for every resident in our community. We lift up our youth today and the entire community of Country Club Hills, Illinois. We ask that you would guide us to make Country Club Hills a city like no other. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Pastor, if you can, would you introduce yourself?
My name is William Jenkins, I pastor in Lansing, Illinois. I previously pastored in Fort High school over twenty years, so I'm happy to be a part of Country Club Hills, Illinois.
Thank you, Pastor Jenkins, thank you so much for that. Okay, at this time, I would like to, uh, let's see, okay, general proceedings?
Thank you, Mayor. General Proceedings, approval of the meeting minutes, administrative meeting minutes from October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, twenty-two.
Okay, I need a second. It's been properly motioned, a second. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have communications and reports by the mayor. The first thing we have, we want to recognize one of our officers who decided to retire from this great city, and we really appreciate the years of services, that service that he has rented to our city. So at this time, we're going to ask the chief to come forward, and then we're going to ask Sergeant Retiree Walker to come forward with your family. Oh, yeah, that'd be good, yeah.
Okay, first and foremost, Sergeant Walker, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your dedication to the community as well as our police department for the last twenty-one and a half years. It's been great working with you, we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. But again, we wanted to formally recognize your achievement as well as your dedication.
The City of Country Club Hills is announcing the retirement of Sergeant Wally L. Walker, badge number eight-eleven. After twenty-one and a half years of dedicated service to the residents of the City of Country Club Hills and the Country Club Hills Police Department, the officers and members would like to thank you for your leadership, guidance, and service. You are now ten forty-two. From Mayor James W. Ford, Police Chief John M. Galvin, and the City of Country Club Hills City Council, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Introduce your wife also, please.
Okay, hello, everybody, this is my wife Cynthia, and my friends in the back there. Oh, you guys should never handed me this, but I'm going to try not to make this too long. Hold it for the bottom, thank you. This has been a great town to work for, this has been a great city to work for, this has been a great police department to work for, and even before you guys gave me that. Thank you, thank you guys for everything. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, thank you, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Before you go away, I'd like to know if we all can come down and take a picture, council members. We can put this on our Facebook page.
[laughing]
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 All awards on a consistent basis, so.
Okay.
Uh, but there is one item um that I want to announce. It's a public workshop. And this is uh for any resident and it's actually uh it's going to be give you an opportunity to um give your input on the city's comprehensive plan and provide a vision for the investment in the community over the new next two decades. So we're asking for residents to come out, join in the conversation. And it's going to be Tuesday tomorrow, November fifteenth from six P M to seven thirty. And it's going to be held in the lower level of City Hall. That's the end of my report.
May I be recognized?
Yes, go right in.
Um, me and Davis and Lockett, we didn't have nothing against the sweeper. We just wanted to see what other ones cost. And we knew that we had to take care of some financial debt, so we wanted to make sure the taxes came in. So we would be adequate enough to pay for it, but it's just being helped while we review exactly where we at as far as economic.
Alright.
Okay, that's the end of my report, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you so much. And uh ladies and gentlemen, this uh confidential our comprehensive plan is very important to the city of Country Club Hills in the future. Uh, this plan will be in place when we are retired, all of us probably. Uh, and so we need your input to come out and give us uh some help in getting this off the ground. Okay, uh with that said, uh I want to go to the next item, which is the economic development. Alderman Spivey, which is, he's absent tonight. Anything on his committee? Anybody?
No report at the time.
Okay, no report. Okay, so let's go to education and Parks and Recs.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the deputy fire chief and the fire chief out for a quick second to give them letters, cards from Chateau School, thanking them for all their support. Uh, these young first graders, second grader and kindergarten took time to try the color and make something to thank them for always supporting them. So I don't know if you want to put them on the firewall or though you just look at them, read them, but this is from Chateau kids, okay? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mayor, uh Rich Township High School, I attended their field day open on the twenty-sixth at six-thirty. Uh, they have a brand-new culinary uh school class. Yes, and they actually cooked for us. And I tried to eagle-a-luck could, but they kind of pushed me out. Uh, they got a film, music, science, new gym, and a new weightlifting facility, okay? Then I attended the one sixty meeting where I made a suggestion that in the future we might put speed bumps and larger stop signs. We also talked about security and mentoring at that meeting. I came back two days later to the one sixty meeting for uh grade program, how to contact parents, new system far as phones to co- contact parents. Uh, so there was two meetings in one week for that. Also want to report that we had two fires in my ward. Uh, I actually met with the fire department while they were putting the fires out. I want to commend them on taking care of their business. Um, I got five stores in the Walmart Plaza to offer jobs for seniors in high school. So I'm going to be working on getting that information out to Goldcrest and Rich Central. Uh, I went to one forty-four meeting on Thursday, November the third. Uh, the mayor of Hazelcrest spoke, the one of the main people in Markham spoke. And there were two state representatives there.
Great.
So I thought I got away and then they asked for me to come speak. I forgot what I said. I got a little nervous, so I hope it was okay. They started clapping. I might offer them money that I don't have. I don't know. And they are working on a trip to Washington, D.C. for the eighth-grade graduating class.
Okay.
Talked about new programs and they opening up a STEM school. Okay, so they're doing pretty good over there, okay? Uh. End of my report. Thank you.
Alright, Alderman, thank you so much.
Motion open floor to the public?
Second.
Probably motion and second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly, Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, um, public, if you would like to address the council, please come to the podium and limit your time to three minutes or less.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Nancy Switzer, I've been here before. Um.
This is your mic on, the blue light?
Uh, there's a little blue dot.
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you.
Do this.
Yeah.
Okay, um. The street sweeper, is that going to happen more now than twice a year if we own that piece of equipment?
If we own it, um, I'm sorry.
Do we currently lease it from someone and they only come twice a year then, which is after the branch pickup? Okay, that's fine, okay. Um, how come there was no meeting between July eleventh and August eighth? Is there some reason for that? See, this is why I get so frustrated. I ask questions, I get no answers.
You will, you will get an answer. Give all your questions first. You only got two minutes.
Uh, it's supposed to be three.
Well.
Well.
The clock is ticking.
Um, on eight-eight, Alderman Evans made some recommendations for changes to the city code. Um, they're not in the city code yet. And when you open up the ordinances on the website, you get this little button that says recent updates or something like that, and it's blank. So I know there was a change in the height of the grass. I don't remember what the other one was, but people can't know what you expect them to do if that information is outdated, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Oh, I have another question. Between six-six and ten-two, and then in addition to the four million dollars that Alderman Lockett mentioned today, there's been over ten million dollars that's gone somewhere. But there's never any indication for us of where that money has gone. So I don't know if there needs to be a short summary added to the minutes, which didn't get read or approved today from the last meeting either. Um, it's just all, I just find all this stuff very frustrating because also in the municipal code, it says that there will be printed copies available of the minutes to members of the public. I've come to numerous meetings across the last two years, not overwhelmingly so, but and I have yet to pick up a single printed copy of minutes. Um, also, my last question for today is um the paperwork went out for senior citizens, snow plowing of driveways. And um, I'm curious to know if individuals get notified as to yea or nay. And if it's nay, are they given a reason why? Because I ended up having to track somebody down last year. I couldn't figure it out. Um, and I just think that people should be told, you know, because people are sitting there maybe not doing anything with their driveways. In addition, if they get turned down, it might be a good idea for them ASAP to perhaps contract with a private partner. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Greetings, council members. Uh, James Mohammed, I live in Country Club Hills. Uh, as young lady mentioned, uh, since snow season is coming up, I've had this uh problem for many, many years and I wish at some point it could be addressed. Since I live at a corner of a very busy street and a small str- side street, when it snows, the the plows come, they clear, they clear the street. But unfortunately and regretfully for me, I come out, I do my my driveway all the way out to the street. But twenty minutes later, the trucks come and because I'm right at the end before Pulaski, they just stop there and where I had cleaned out my driveway, at the end of the driveway, now there's a foot, foot and a half of hard snow. I mean, the kind that's the hard stuff instead of the soft stuff. So I would just ask if you could have the plowers be mindful that some folks, sixty-eight years old or older, can't get out there every time they come by after they've already cleaned it. And that is a major issue for me because it's uh heavy snow. It's not light. Uh, secondly, with regard to the fireworks ordinance, I wonder, does it address when I mean, sometimes I will, I will be driving down the street and you can't go past because the fireworks are out in the street, which is public. So does it address that aspect of it? Um, then there's a fence when we had the very hard wind a few days back right at one hundred sixty-eighth and Pulaski, it's falling into the sidewalk. I have called and left a message for Public Works. And then sometimes you call Public Works and you press the button and it doesn't, it just disconnects, so. But that is falling on the um pavement. And lastly, if uh, at some point, I know you, there used to be a statement, it wasn't exact figures, but it would say whether or not the theater made money or lost money. We always lost money. But uh nowadays, you don't hear what the results of the season was uh as a taxpayer who is funding a lot of that. And it would be good to know whether we're making or losing or breaking even. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
How you doing? I'm Juwan Garth. I've been a resident out here for over twenty years now. I'm a builder. I'm building back over on one hundred seventy-second street, right behind Hill Press. Last week, there was a fire over there and other properties got damaged due to that fire. Now, when I start building back there, I I approached the the count to or talked to someone about the property back there with all the dilapidated properties that's there. It was concerned. When I first started there, they stole a hundred thousand dollar machine from me. I was able to track it down. And where was it at? Right back there in the building. Now with this fire coming, I got homes up there now. It's my concern. Now, I I offered the village to remove all those properties back there when I started because I was concerned about that. Nothing was said or done about it. And my plight is that I took it upon myself and I spent a lot of money clearing the way for my trucks to get in and out back there safely. And had I not did that, is no way that the fire department would have been able to get back there to put that house out. It was a fence there, trees, shrubbery, everything. It's a disaster back there. I submitted my drawings to the village about bringing the water line through the houses. I was turned down for that. Had that been there, the village wouldn't have had to run seven hundred feet of holes down to that property. The village wouldn't have had to use all the water in the five fire trucks that was out there that gotta be replenished. And who gotta pay for that? Us as taxpayers. And my plight is that when they first did the subdivision up the street, it was okay for that builder to come through the property with the water line. But now that I asked, I've been refused. And and I don't understand that and and I feel that it's wrong to me being that what I'm doing is helping the community. What I offered to do was help the community, to beautify the community. The guy said in his prayer, he prayed for Country Club Hills to be one of the nicest places to be. I'm the same way. He just got here. I've been here twenty-some years and he paying, praying for my community? And and I'm the one that's out here spending money to help, but I I have no other resources but to spend my own money to help beautify this community, and I don't think it's fair to me.
Alright, thank you. Um, anyone else?
Motion close the floor to the public?
Second.
It's been probably motion second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
Okay, uh, at this time, we want to go to the automatic reports. With you tonight. Alright.
To uh, Mr. Mohammed, I received this sheet pertaining to the theater. It does not have a clear understanding, and I think we need to meet with the finance so that we can get a breakdown of every show, every ticket sale, and whether it was a profit. We do have money in the bank from it, but I did receive the sheet and it needs more detail. The gentleman who, the fire, actually went back there and there were fire companies from quite a different municipalities. I did receive the mayor telling me and A.J. to sit down and get with you, but A.J. has personal issues that he has to take care. Uh, when he comes back, I'll be willing to meet with you, with A.J. and whoever else we can. I understand what you're talking about. I seen it. I stood there and watched it. For uh, one of the things I'm asking for, from my other friend, is a list of what we spent per ward on streets. And uh, Mr. Davis will help me, I believe, find out whether or not, how much we allocated just extra for our streets to be fixed. It's a good question. For the grass, I see, Alex, I don't know, did we pass that ordinance out or is it still, it's passed out? So I think it's like two more inches or something? Okay, okay. Um, far as the uh, all the sweeper machine, there was a lease and a price to buy it. My thing was, I don't see any comparisons. So are we going with the first car dealer we go to without checking the next car dealer? I mean, you need to bring something to present. And we had had a meeting that Monday for admin and we were told what we had to pay coming up. And I just didn't see feasible to do it right now. It need to be done. I asked that we ask Homewood disposable, what would cost to get maybe eight more or nine more sweeps? Since they already doing it, let's see what they, they might throw in for if we pay for it. So I asked for that. Um, and I do know we need some accountability on monies being spent. So I don't know, I, you know, we just gotta do better. Uh, for my residents, I want them to be safe and all residents in Country Club Hills. I want us to help each other and I want us to work on helping our seniors. They got a December eighth is it meeting uh dinner over at the facility?
Resource Center.
Resource Center on December the eighth. Um, I'm gonna sponsor them some gift cards and other prizes for the seniors. Um, I'm out here working every day to do my job, so please give me a chance. End of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Lockett?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before I get started, I just want to mention that the city of Country Club Hills is um physically sound for mu- uh money. We didn't have to take a bridge loan. We didn't need money from the county, state, or the government. So we've been managing our money pretty good.
Pretty good.
In order for us at this time for the tax dollars to be three months behind and we're still operating with a positive balance. So um, I'd like to give a shout-out to our uh, finance director and the administration and staff here at Country Club Hills to make sure that that has happened for us. Um, just to mention that on December third, Saturday, December third, from three P M to six P M at the Country Club Hills Theater Pavilion and addresses across the street from City Hall here, forty-one sixteen West Hundred Eighty-third Street. Gonna have Winter Wonderland and um, there's gonna be tons of winter activities to enjoy. You can meet Santa. It's gonna be a coloring contest, ugly sweater contest, Christmas music, tree lighting ceremony games and much more. So it's gonna be cookies, cocoa refreshments, available while they last. The entry fee is free, so tell a friend, bring a friend, and we'll see you then. Uh, for more information, you can log on to W W W countryclubhills.org. The other thing I want to mention is um, coming up soon here, the Junior Hawks um cheerleading team. The Midwest Junior Hawks Youth Cheerleading Organization is a nonprofit organization to growth and development of young athletes in the south suburbs and its surrounding communities. Um, our mission is to develop teamwork and sportsmanship and provide a safe and respectful environment where children can learn, grow, and have fun. Um, we recently completed, competed in a regional competition as a second-year program. We are so proud that all four of our teams won and are excited for the opportunity to advance to Florida next month for the national championship competition. We are in need of your support and the support of others as we prepare and work hard to get every girl to live their national cheerleading dreams. We are raising funds to assist us with this expense for the nationals. Please feel free to share with others. We thank you in advance for your supports. Let's go Hawks. So they have a um, the Midwest Junior Hawks have a GoFundMe page and they're asking for um, the people, not only the elected officials, but the people within the Southland to support these young girls to help them go to the national competition. And um, I also want to mention something. Um, oh, it's holiday season. Um, be sure to be careful. Um. You know, there's a lot of scams and everything going on around this time of the year, so be careful if you get any phone calls that Lil Pookie in jail. Let Lil Pookie just stay in jail. Don't try to bond him out. Um, or don't go to Walmart getting gift cards for somebody and transferring numbers and things like that. Um. One more thing to mention was, don't forget to bring some non-perishable items to City Hall for the homeless. And um, the holidays are coming up. Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. And Thanksgiving is coming up. I don't know if we meet again before then, but if we don't, happy Thanksgiving. Oh, I did have one other to mention. On Saturday, um, November nineteenth, uh, at the Jubilee Church right here at one hundred sixty-seventh street across from Walmart, I'm sponsoring um, a turkey giveaway for the residents of Ward Two. So come on out, bring your I.D., get a turkey, see me, it's free, and thank you. End of my report.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just real quick, um, the gentleman who's doing the development. Mayor, I don't have all the de- I don't know what was done on that, but I would just, first of all, I applaud you for coming to the city. And I did see you, the two, I think you got two of them pretty much up, and I seen the development he was doing. And that's encouraging and and for individual to do development and not come to the city and ask for anything. I think we should do everything we can to try to work with this individual to make sure that not only your project's successful, but we kind of have a partnership, so appreciate that. I just, I don't know if, where you're at with terms of uh, meeting with somebody, but I'm sure that, you know, something should be done to work with you, so. Alright, but thanks for that. And also, the um, Mr. Mohammed, the driveways. Yeah, that's a tough, I I don't even have the answer for that because it's um, it happens in my ward all the time. I get a lot of complaints. Lot of seniors, because there's a lot of big driveways and there's a lot of cul-de-sacs, so. You know, all we can do is ask the Public Works to try to be a little more conscientious, you know, when they s- I mean, it's tough because if they're driving down the street and they're pushing all that snow, it goes up in those driveways. I mean, I mean, I'm out there sometimes, I'm shoveling and you see the truck come right back and so I don't, I don't have that answer, but I do think that um, it is something that we need to obviously try to address or be more conscientious about it. Uh, I wish Jerry or somebody, Public Works was here, but see anybody back there. Just.
He's right there.
Oh, is he? Could, I don't know if he could kind of enlighten us or so. I don't know what could be done, Mayor, but it's.
If, if he would like to, um, it's, it's a tough call because we tried to clear the streets before uh, so the residents can get out. And when, when I talk to these guys, they say, well, what do you want me to do? I can't stop. They said, I can't stop at each driveway and make sure that I turn the ply- the plier to go the other way. So it's kind of difficult. I don't know how we can do that. If you've got some recommendations, I'm willing to listen.
Okay.
And I think uh, Public Works is willing to listen too, because I don't have an answer for that one.
Because I mean, we do, and I got neighbors, they'll help each other out.
Yeah.
Come right behind.
Come right and clean it out, yeah.
Because we got big driveways, especially those cul-de-sacs with the bulbs.
Yeah.
They just get back on those big snow days. It's, it's, it's major. Um, oh, and and I see, Alderman, we did, um, we did get a update on the streets, so we should have that. So Mayor passed that out for the meeting, so this was um, it actually has the amount that was spent by each ward.
Got you.
Alright, and um, also, I just want to mention, they have a um, Chicago Southland Economic Development Corporation. Uh, they're giving a um, apprenticeship, which it'll give skilled jobs to individuals and they're feeding people. And apprenticeship is gonna be for maintenance tech, techs, field service techs, electrical, electric medical tech. And they're actually feeding people. And that just gives our youth and people looking for jobs, give them a skill set that they can have and have a decent job. And this, this event's gonna be uh, November eighteenth, and it's Friday, um, and it's gonna be in Park Forest. Um, and we can lead this up here for anybody. Oh, I'm sure they can come to City Hall.
Copies over here, myself.
The address is two oh eight Forest Park, Park Forest, Illinois. Um, and then you can just get the information from the city, if you know anybody who might be interested. Alright, and that's the uh. Go ahead.
You're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah, uh, and the cul-de-sacs, it was, I think we could, you know, in the middle of it. Should have driveways because it's a cul-de-sac. So you understand what I'm saying? I live in a cul-de-sac. You could put all the snow in the middle instead of just pushing it up against people's driveways. And on the sheet you just gave me, my last thing, is this additional gonna be done this year?
Uh, can we talk about that? I mean, you know.
You give me a sheet at the last minute, I have a question.
Well, we can answer that question, but I want, want to answer the other questions from the residents that came.
Okay, go ahead.
Alright, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um. I think we talked about the snow removal. Uh, I don't know, Mr. Mohammed, if you've got some ideas, let us know about it and we can definitely address it. Uh, to the developer now, wh- when we talked before, you made me aware of that, made me aware of that, that land back there was unincorporated, owned by the Cook County Land Bank or something?
Yeah, Cook County Land Bank owned.
Okay.
And I've been reaching out to them, uh, for them to get back with me, but their words to me was that if the city bought it, it'd be cheaper for the city to buy it, then it would be me, and I could buy it directly from the city.
Okay, okay. So that means something finance you guys have to look at, see if we want to buy that land because it's owned by Cook County. Um, that little partial land with three houses back, two houses, one house now because of one burn, right?
You have one house, two standing back there, you got a pool barn, and you have a.
Yeah, so that belongs to Cook County Land Bank, so we would have to try to inquire that somehow or work with them. So I want to pass that on to finance. And uh, I think we could kind of follow up with that and see what we can do with that to help you out amongst some other things that we can probably do as well. Um, the theater, I think we can talk about that. That's not a problem. But um, as the Alderman said, the city of Country Club Hills is financial, financial sta- uh, stable. Uh, we went through the pandemic and we didn't miss a beat. We didn't miss a payroll. Uh, and so we, we're doing well. And I I contribute that to uh, good management from the mayor and the council uh, for making that happen. And so uh, if you want to know about where the money went and everything, there's a report that uh, we publish on a regular basis, that we will be glad to make that uh, available to you. In fact, uh, this report here, right? Can we make that available to the public? No?
It has to be a different report.
Okay, we can, we can formulate a report for you that shows you where uh, all of the monies goes from the city of Country Club Hills, so that's not an issue. We can take care of that. Uh, what else? Oh, the meetings. I don't know, you gave us. What else? Oh, the meetings. I don't know. You gave us some dates, and I'm not sure.
So, I can address one of them?
Go ahead, yeah.
There was a July 25th meeting that we did not hold because it was the lack of quorum with that one, and we do have that on the website. If you click in, you'll be able to see that. It's not in the list of minutes because the meeting was not held. If you look on the agenda, no, not, no. If you look on the agenda, it'll show the meeting was not held due to lack of quorum.
I have to look at the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
And I have your minutes for you.
Okay. Yes.
One of the reasons that I was so pissed at one time is because I had to take my daughter to the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
And somehow, maybe I may call, tolerate people, whatever, but they did come back. And then they did mine, and then I feel like they went around and did it. So, I don't know what happened, but they did come back.
Okay.
And I'm just saying because if somebody had emergency.
It'd be difficult for them to get out.
They're not being able to.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll have that discussion with the Public Works folks and see if they can give us, you know, some suggestions on how we can maybe help out the residents in that area as come to their driveways. Did we answer pretty much? Was there other ones that we didn't answer?
Yeah. I'll still talk to Ms. Switzer after the meeting.
Okay.
I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, sidebar. Okay, so at this point, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion and second. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman Edwards?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. If anyone want to speak to the mayor or any of the council members, please come forward.
Meeting adjourned at 8:03 PM.
8:03 PM. Thank you.